Tim's also going to be keeping an eye on the chat, so I know not everybody's confident about speaking out in large groups and groups that are unfamiliar to you. So if you do have any questions along the way, pop them in the chat. And if for any reason I can't read it, Tim will make sure I'm aware and we cover them before the end of the session. I wanted to start off by saying a little bit about the Centre for Systemic Social Work. So just to set the context a little bit, I'm a social worker. I've worked in children's social care for about 35 years now. I'm also a systemic family therapist, hence the Centre for Systemic Social Work. And the Centre for Systemic Social Work has been operational for about seven years now. Our role is to work with local authorities who are identified through a partnership with the DFE or also through local authorities who approach us to help their staff become acquainted with systemic ideas and incorporate them into their day to day work with children and families. We're very committed to thinking about our values. And one thing that I did want to say is even though we're called the Centre for Systemic Social Work, I don't want anybody who's not a social worker to feel that these courses aren't for them. I'd really like to call us something like the Centre for People Who Work in Social Care and Affiliated Professions, but it's just too long winded. So if you are on the call and you're one of our colleagues from Early Help, Youth Defending, perhaps you work in residential units or one of our contact centres, please don't feel these courses aren't for you. We're really talking about how we can maximise our skills and our abilities to meet the challenges of working in all social care services connected with children and young people at a time that I think is really quite challenging. And hopefully we can say a bit more about that later. I've been blessed to be the director of the centre for about five years now. I took over from my colleague Rashid Pendrey, who some of you might know, who was the founder of the centre. And he was very committed from the get go to thinking about our core values and who we are as a teaching organisation. So we remain highly committed to thinking about how we as a teaching organisation can be very active and very visible in challenging all forms of suppression, marginalisation and disadvantage. And that pertains to the way in which we intend to deliver our training, how you can expect us to be as people you will be working with, and how we can really ensure that those core values are consistently held at all levels of our activity. So we'll be talking more about some of the ways that we seek to challenge misuses of power in our training materials, in the way that we deliver the training and indeed the themes and the conversations that we will be having on our courses. So they're our core values. You'll be seeing that slide a lot. And what we always ask you to do is to hold us to account. We've put forward this as our vision, as our intentionality in how we're going to be working with you, but we don't always get it right. So we'd really like to hear from you, good, bad or in the middle. We absolutely thrive on feedback. So please do let us know. And we've only developed and we're only where we're at in terms of the teaching organisation because of the generosity of participants in sharing their feedback and helping us grow and develop and evolve. So it really is something that's very important to us and we love hearing from you. So please don't hesitate to get in touch. Okay, I'm not going to go through this slide in great detail, but I think one of the things that we've been talking a lot about in the last few years, particularly I think since Black Lives Matter, Me Too, and some of those very sort of like public and universal acknowledgements of disparities in power and opportunity, is thinking about how we actually show our commitment to inclusivity. I think we had a discussion one day and we were a little bit mindful that we might have been talking the talk and not walking the walk as a teaching organisation. So these are some ways that we seek to demonstrate our commitment to inclusion and equity. It's a non exhaustive list. We're evolving all the time. And again, we really look forward to hearing your feedback. And again, thinking about what else we might want to be thinking about or bearing in mind to ensure that we are as inclusive as possible. I meant to say at the beginning, I love talking, but I'm also very up for being interrupted. So don't hesitate. I will periodically hopefully remind myself to pause for breath and ask for questions. But don't necessarily wait for that moment, just unmute or put your hands up and we'll do our best to respond. I'm anticipating that we've got a really broad selection of people from different local authorities. I might ask for some thumbs or hands. Have we got any participants today who work for Northamptonshire? Have we got any Northampton colleagues on the call? Hello, Northamptonshire. Hey, lovely to have you with us. Thank you so much for joining. Oh, loads of you, that's fabulous. I can also see just by addresses that we've got some participants from what I call our home boroughs, Westminster City Council, RBKC, Hammersmith and Fulham. Good afternoon, everybody. Have we got anybody from our colleagues in the South West? Bristol, Gloucestershire, Baines? Have we got anybody from... Oh, that was so beautiful. That was such a visual, lots of thumbs. Welcome, our South West hub. Very lovely to have you with us. Have I missed anybody out? My favourites, not really. I haven't really got favourites. Wandsworth, anybody from Wandsworth on the call this afternoon? Good afternoon, Wandsworth. I'm so sorry I woke him and the other W, welcome. Thank you very much indeed. I'm just saying that with a couple of reasons. A, to demonstrate the fact that we're a national organisation and we work with local authorities throughout England. Your new systemic ideas.
Sorry Caroline. Sorry Caroline.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, you're back again.
I'm frozen on my screen. Yeah, you're frozen on my screen.
Okay, all right. Can you still, can you still hear me?
Yeah, I can still hear you, but you would, you did go in and out at one stage.
Okay, all right. Thanks ever so much to let me know. Tim, can you keep an eye out? And if that happens, all right, I'm going to turn off my camera and just to see if that helps a little bit. I'm so sorry, everybody. So as I was saying, I was asking for who comes from what local authority, just because we work with a broad variety of local authorities. And also just to assist you in thinking, some of you might be very well acquainted with systemic ideas and some of you might be very much newer. We will always be working with you, so I'm not saying cover all bases, but to be as adaptive as we can, so we can work with you regardless of your level of knowledge. And if this is the first time you've ever heard the word systemic and you don't know what it is, that's fantastic as far as we're concerned. We're with you on a journey and we will always be doing what we can to prepare you and ensure that the level of information we're giving you has a good fit and a good connection with where you're at in terms of your understanding of these ideas. Okay, I've just noticed I've got one hand up. Is it Baljit? I just wanted to make sure that I haven't got another question before I move on.
No, no, sorry.
You're all right, are you Baljit? Don't you worry, that's absolutely fine. I just wanted to acquaint you, some of you will already be aware with the idea of the social graces. So this is an idea from John Burnham. And it really talks about all aspects of our identity and what we call selfhood. And this is a really important thing, not just to be thinking about in terms of the families and the communities we work with, but also very much thinking about ourselves. And for me, the idea of the social graces really relates to how I connect with learning. So I come from a very working class family. Education wasn't something that was privileged. It was all about get out in the big wide world and make some money. That was very much a script from my family of origin. So as a consequence, my sort of like connection with training and learning is sometimes quite fragile and quite rocky. And what we're intending to do on the course is to really help you think about what are the stories that you tell about yourself as a professional or somebody working in social care? What are the stories you tell about yourself as a participant in a training? In terms of your education, in terms of how you learn? And we'll be thinking with you about are those stories still useful and fitting? Or might it be helpful to us to introduce some newness and difference into those stories in order for you to maximise the benefit of attending the training and what you hope to get out of it? So that's our little introduction to the social graces. I think I've probably said enough about this. So the centre originated in the London boroughs of Kensington and Chelsea, Hammersmith and Fulham and Westminster. And we adopted a systemic practice model probably about 10 years ago. And that's not to say we know it all and we're not evolving. But as a consequence of what we learnt and what we discovered in terms of using systemic ideas with the families and the communities we work with and for, we thought it might be useful to share these ideas with other local authorities, hence us partnering with your organisations and where we are now. We don't have many rules at the Centre for Systemic Social Work, but one rule we do have is we only agree to work with local authorities who demonstrate a genuine commitment to going with a whole programme. So the training is one small part of it, but we will be doing lots and lots of work with your senior leaders who will also be coming on the training course. And really thinking with them about organisational change and how that happens. So if we don't have that commitment from senior leaders, we won't be entering into a relationship or a partnership with you. So will I name names? I'm just trying to remember who I work with. So I work a lot with your senior leadership teams. I won't bore you with sort of like naming them. But many of them are currently attending the leadership courses or have attended the leadership courses in the past. So do be assured that I'm in regular dialogue with your assistant directors, your directors, your principal social workers to really think about how we can be assisting you in using these ideas in your day to day work. Okay, so it's a really core component of what we offer and what we do. Okay, I think we're settling down a little bit and hopefully the technical glitches have deserted us for now. Something that I think is quite unique to systemic practice is the fact that it is, from my perspective, a really flexible and inclusive approach. It's not branded, it's not manualised, you don't have to buy the software to go with it. Each local authority and indeed each of us as individuals will have connections and preferences and go tos when we start to learn about systemic ideas. And for those of you that work in local authorities that also use other approaches, such as a trauma informed approach, restorative approaches, maybe you use signs of safety, there is a real fit and a real ability to link these ideas in a way that feels really coherent and joined up. So what I really want to say to you is coming on the training with us is not an opportunity for you to discard or devalue everything you are currently doing in your practice. Absolutely not. Bring it to the table, we want to hear about it. If you've been working in social care for four months or if you've been working in social care for 40 years, you have a wealth of experience and expertise and knowledge. And we are all about celebrating that and enhancing it. So I'd hate anybody to come on our courses and think it's all about forgetting or imagining that what I'm doing now isn't successful or, you know, doesn't have meaning. Absolutely not. This approach is all about adding to and developing further skills that can really assist us in navigating what can be extremely rocky territory in children's social care, regardless of what service area or sector we sit in. So a lot of people say systemic practice, it's all about the relationships. It is all about relationships, but it's all about relationships in the service of promoting better outcomes for children and young people. That's, that's really what it's about. Okay. I think one of the things that when I first became acquainted with systemic ideas a long, long time ago now, one of the things that was most surprising for me and perhaps the most difficult thing for me to get my head around was the idea that when we work systemically, we move away from the idea that we're neutral professionals. So when I started my career in social care, I was kind of like told, you've got your training, you've got your policies and procedures. And if you find yourself becoming emotionally affected or connecting with any of the families and young people you work with, then you're probably contravening boundaries and you're not being very professional. That was kind of like the sort of like the way in which I was educated and growing for want of a better expression in social care. And systemic practice absolutely turns that on its head. And it really acknowledges that all of us have lived experiences and values and beliefs that really shape and inform the way in which we see the world. You know, the sense we make of it, how we make our judgements, how we define things like good enough parenting, for example. And instead of pretending they're not there, when we work systemically, we really think about where those ideas came from. And we become adept at kind of like unpicking them and thinking about where they're taking us. Is this a useful way to proceed? Or might our thinking and might our ability to work effectively in this context be really enhanced if we incorporate some different views into our thinking? Or we challenge ourselves to see an alternative perspective or another point of view? So that's a really big change for me and a really big challenge, I think. And I know many of you will be working in this way already. But for me, that's one of the core characteristics of a systemic approach. As we've already talked about, systemic practice enables us to think really clearly and really explicitly about power and difference. And I think one of the things that again has served us really well in utilising these ideas is thinking about families' relationships with helping agencies. And I'm sure that many of us work with families where there's been transgenerational involvement from social care and other professional organisations, the judiciary, the courts, whoever it is. And really thinking about the stories that families tell about us as professionals, tell about our colleagues in education, tell about our colleagues in health, and how we can think with them about how those stories have become established and what we need to demonstrate as professionals that encourages families to believe and trust that we are committed to doing something different. And we find this way of practising, it's not a magic wand. And we all have our challenges and particularly at the moment, I don't think the work gets any less and it certainly doesn't get any less complex. But we found and we've got some, some research. We're building an evidence base about what these ideas do and don't permit. And also anecdotally, I think a lot of people find practising in this way and incorporating these ideas into their practice really does make them feel more robust and more agile and more able to work creatively in situations that can initially appear really constrained. Just want to pause there. I'm just going to have a look at the chat because even though I said I was going to put it up there, I haven't. Okay, so apart from reminding me that I didn't say hello to Havering. Havering, I am so sorry. I was in sunny and it was really sunny, it was boiling hot. I was in Havering, I think it was two weeks ago. So I'm so sorry that I didn't name check you, people from Havering. Thank you for prompting me. I did say hello to Wandsworth at some point, but that could have been the point where I was, I was going to say cracking up, breaking up. So yeah, hello Wandsworth as well. Thank you for the prompts. Okay. I'm just gonna invite myself to pause for a minute. Have a couple of minutes. I was going to say I turned my camera off, but it's already off. I turned my mic off for a couple of minutes. Just have a chance to think about any specific questions you have, anything that you'd like us to address this afternoon. You can pop it in the chat or indeed when I rejoin you in a minute or so, please feel free to either put your hand up or just unmute and ask. So any questions, any thoughts you've got, I'll be back in a minute. Okay, everyone, I'm back. I can't see any questions in the chat. Tim, I just want to check in. Can you see any questions in the chat that I've missed?
No, it's looking fairly clear. Oh, someone's just posted.
Thank you, I can see the one from Charles, I'll deal with that, thank you. Oh, thanks Charles. So Charles just commented about being open to systemic ideas and thank you very much for that, Charles. Any other questions or hopes for the session this afternoon before I move on? Okay. Oh, I've got a lovely one from Karen. Hello Karen. Karen, you're from Kensington. Karen, can I be cheeky and ask where you're based? Just because I'm nosy. Maybe Karen can't unmute, she can maybe let me know. Karen's asked, will this way of work commit families provide a pathway? Wow, a pathway to supporting challenges in relationship building, especially with generational issues. Old Town Hall, I used to work at the Old Town Hall, welcome. Yeah, I can't say definitely, but we're really interested in those patterns that get created in families. Do you know what I mean? We've all got them, haven't we? I've just been on the phone to my brother in my very brief lunch break. And we were probably having, we weren't talking about the same things, but we were having a very similar type of conversation 40 years ago, 30 years ago, 20 years ago. Because we are locked into a pattern of how we do our relationship. And sometimes, to be quite frank with you, it's not always that helpful. So what I find is systemic ideas can really help us, no matter who we're interfacing with, in interrupting some of those patterns that can become very stuck and unhelpful. So Karen, I hope that answers your questions about generational issues and how systemic ideas might help us. Okay, I've got another one from Victoria, welcome Victoria. Lovely, okay. Quite often, so Victoria said about naming what she does in her day to day work. Quite often when we present systemic ideas to people, people say, hang on a minute, I'm doing this already. And for a lot of the ideas, you are, you absolutely are. But again, I think what learning systemic approaches can really help with is being able to articulate what we do and why. So often I see brilliant examples of practice or I talk to managers and they've done a really, really good supervision. And I say to them, you know, what was it you did? And people quite often shrug their shoulders and say, I don't know, is it just what I always do? And I think what systemic practice can really help us do is articulate our rationale. And I think that's so important, not only in terms of our relationships with broader audiences who will be scrutinising our work and often wanting an account or perhaps a justification for the action we're taking. But I also think it gives real credibility in terms of when we're working with our families to be able to be really explicit. We often talk about showing you're working out, to be able to say, families, this is what I'm thinking about doing. You know, how do you think about this? This is my rationale, this is why I think this might be important. So having that clarity and being really explicit in what we do and why, that for me is a really important part of systemic practice. Victoria's also talking about workload and essays. And I know that's very much sort of like shared with lots of you. And I'm going to be coming on to that shortly. And then I've got a message from Alexander, in terms of career progression, I don't know what an FSW is towards social worker. I'm really sorry, I don't know what an, I know I'm being a bit, probably it's really obvious, family support worker. Okay. So the course that you'll be, I was a family support worker, I should have known that. They obviously didn't have that abbreviation when I was doing it. I've never called it that before, I'm so sorry. So Alex, this isn't necessarily like a module on your social work training, but I'll talk a little bit more about accreditation next. And hopefully it just really enhances your skills. And I'm not saying it would necessarily add towards your social work training. But I think if you're applying for social work training and you could demonstrate that you've done the first year in systemic, it definitely wouldn't do you any harm. So I hope that's helpful. Okay, let's move on. I emailed you just before we came on the call, those of you that had invitations. So you will have my email address. So if there's any questions that I don't get to answer or you don't feel I've answered satisfactorily during the session, just email me afterwards and I'll do my best to answer your questions. Oh, hello Happiness. Happiness is asking about will this training be offered to every single social worker within the local authority? Well, yes, no. The challenge always is about pacing. And every year, your local authorities will have a number of places that they can offer to people and often to train an entire workforce. That can be a real long term investment. I know when we did it in the tri borough, it took us at least sort of like three and a half, four years to get everybody trained. And I say everybody in inverted commas, because of course people leave, people are on mat leave, people are on long term sick. So it's quite hard to get to the point where every single person is trained. What we're doing more of now is in addition to offering our 15 day courses, we also offer short courses. So some of your colleagues who won't necessarily be on the training for a couple of years, they might well access one of our shorter courses that will just equip them with the broadest ideas from systemic practice. So maybe I can think a little bit, I don't know what organisation you're from Happiness, but maybe I can elaborate on that a little bit more in terms of your specific local authority's plan. All right. I just want to move on to talking a little bit about what's on offer to you. So I'm just going to give you some names. Okay, so for those of you that are going to be undertaking the training course in London, you're going to be with our tutor Karen Gohun. Karen has worked for the centre for a number of years. She was a social worker when I first met her and then she became a consultant social worker in the London Borough of Hackney. That's where I first met her. So she's very much immersed in social care context. She's a family, she's systemic psychotherapist, family therapist as well. And Karen will be delivering the courses in London. For those of you that are in Northampton, some of you will be working with our colleague Roland Pooms. Roland's been with us the longest. So his background is primarily in probation. He currently works in the London Borough of Hammersmith and Fulham two days a week, predominantly in their child protection and youth offending teams. And then our other colleague leading the sessions in Northampton is Kate Marie Travis. Kate Marie has only just joined us, but again, I've known Kate Marie for about 15 years. She's a social worker and a family therapist. Kate's done an extraordinary amount of work in fostering and adoption, but she's also had experience elsewhere in children's social care. So she's somebody who's newer to the team, but let's just say she's hit the ground running. And I know she's already teaching some of your colleagues in Northampton. So she'll be looking forward to meeting her new cohort in the autumn. And then for those of you that are going to be in our South West cohort, which I think is going to be based in Gloucestershire, that's Annete Stradulu. Again, one of our really long term teachers. And again, Annete was a social worker when I first met her. Then she became a consultant social worker, there's a bit of a pattern here. And now she's a systemic psychotherapist and she's been working with us for about three years. So I know that those are just names, but something we're really committed to at the centre is always having tutors who are either working currently or who have worked in the last two years in children's social care settings. I think it's really, really hard if you've got a tutor who's giving you examples from their practice that's either 100 years old or doesn't relate to the context. So I'm very confident that all of those tutors have recent or current experience working in social care. So hopefully that will really add to the tone and sort of like the focus of your sessions with them. Okay, so we're really aiming to be as inclusive as we can and give you the support you need to complete the course. So all of you can access one to one support with your tutors, or indeed you may have co tutors as well. I'd strongly recommend that you do that. If at any time you find yourself struggling, if you're behind, if you can't remember how on earth you access the reading material, just get in contact with us. There is absolutely no such thing as a stupid question. And we would much rather you ask than you try and piece it together or run around the houses and try and find the answer out for yourself. You are busy enough and you have enough pressure in your day to day work. So if there's anything that doesn't make sense to you, or if you're not clear on anything, get in touch with us. We will not mind at all. Likewise, if you find yourself on day five of the course and you suddenly realise that you haven't written anything down, you haven't accessed the reading, you don't know anything about the handbook, talk to your tutor or email us and we will help you. We've all been there. Right? We're all human beings, so there will be no judgement, there'll be no repercussions. Just let us know and we will do our absolute best to help you and help you get back on track. Okay. And there is an opportunity to access one to one support from our educational psychology team. The way in which you can access this is to have a conversation with your tutor initially. This service isn't exclusively for people with diagnosed learning difficulties such as dyslexia, Asperger's, dyspraxia, those sorts of conditions. But it is often quite helpful for people who are affected by those issues to have this level of support. But it's not exclusively. So what I'd suggest you do initially is have a conversation with your tutor about your learning needs. And then we can think whether or not a session with our educational team might be beneficial. And if that is so, we'll talk to you a little bit about how you can prepare for that and the service that they offer. And some of our reading materials are available on audio and we'll talk a little bit more about how you access your reading materials later. Not all of them, but a significant proportion of the reading is available on audio. And I know some participants and some of our students find that incredibly helpful. It just depends on your style and how that fits in with everything else you're trying to do. And we'll always be really committed to adapting the learning environment as much as we possibly can. So again, if you have any additional needs, if you have any sort of like sensory impairment, if you're somebody who needs to move around, you know, more frequently than other people for whatever reason, just talk to us and we'll do our very best to accommodate you and make sure that you are as catered for as possible to maximise your ability to participate and make good use of this opportunity. I'm going to talk a little bit about each of the courses and then if Tim's still on the call, I'm going to invite him in because I think he's got a little bit of a checklist just to make sure we've got everything we need to get started. And so primarily we offer three courses. But I just want to check, I don't think anybody on the call today is attending a leadership course. In fact, I'm saying this, and I know this isn't true because I run the leadership courses and they've started already. So quite a while went down that road, I don't know. So I'm absolutely anticipating, but I don't want to be too assumptive, that there's nobody who thinks that they're doing the six day leadership on the call. But if you do, please either raise your hands or pop it in the chat and then, then I'll, I'll think about what I do. So I'm guessing that all of you on the call are either due to commence the certificate in social work practice with children and families, or the certificate in supervision and management. Just want to say a little bit about who goes on what course. So the top one, the practice with children and families, that's for anybody in a front facing role that has regular and consistent contact with families, and that's families in the broadest sense of the word. So that might be people working in youth offending services, it might be people working in children with disabilities, as well as our sort of like, you know, frontline child protection teams and what have you, would also include you if you're working in family centres, contact centres, residential, any of those sorts of settings where your work is primarily about interfacing with children, young people and their families of whatever shape and description. And then the management course, that's for anybody who is supervising or managing other members of staff and also for our colleagues who are in consultative and advisory roles. So that would be our child protection chairs, our independent reviewing officers, our laddos. People in those sorts of roles would be coming on the management and supervision course. Okay. I just want to say a little bit about the issue of accreditation, because this is often something that comes up and I want to try and be as clear with you as possible. So the 15 day practice course, that's the course for frontline staff, is accredited by the Association of Family Therapists. Okay. The manager's course is not accredited and the reason for that is the Association of Family Therapy has very sort of like strict rules. And I will say at the moment, they are being contested and I do imagine that in the next year or so, things might change. But at the moment, the only way that we can get a course accredited is by participant students demonstrating a certain number of hours of direct work with families. And we know realistically, that's absolutely not possible for us to do if we're in managerial roles or roles such as child protection chair, et cetera. The only thing to bear in mind in terms of accreditation, the only way that it has any sort of like impact is for those of you that want to go on to do next level training. And I know there will be some of you who already have aspirations perhaps to progress beyond year one. And for those of you that do the management course, it is entirely possible to join a year two course with that certificate. You may need to do what's called an APAL application and we can really assist you with that. I was going to do a bit of hard selling and say, if you come on our year two course, that won't be necessary. We will accept your qualification and we will, we will welcome you onto our year two. And to be honest, nationally, we're now pretty well established and all the main teaching organisations that offer year two courses are aware of us and aware of our work. So it's never ever been an issue for any of our past participants. But I do think it's fair just to be transparent and upfront about that. And although the management course isn't formally accredited by the Association for Family Therapy, it is still absolutely an integral part of your CPD and it is the equivalent of a foundation level training in systemic practice. So for those of you, like I say, who have aspirations to go on and do further study, it is the equivalent. Okay, I hope that's clear to everybody. If you do have further questions, just let me know. I'm going to talk a little bit about the practice course and the manager's course. They're quite similar in shape. Okay. So both courses are 15 days long. We, you should all have your course dates. So maybe when I queue Tim in a little bit later, we can check that. We never run training during the school holidays. The only thing that's a little bit tricky is half terms. Because what we know is three different local authorities can have half terms at different times. But we do try and do local intel, you know, regarding your local authority and find out when your half terms are. But by and large, we operate to a term time curriculum. The teaching day will normally start at 10am and it will normally conclude at 3:45. There might be some minor variations within that, but that's generally the shape of the day. You may well see that you've got invitations in your calendars that run from nine to five. Some local authorities do that. The only reason why they do that is to try and protect that time before and after the session. So you can sort of like have time to prepare yourself for the session and indeed to perhaps do some work afterwards to consolidate your notes, whatever. I live in the real world and I know for many of you, that won't be the reality. I know that many of you will be rushing out the door at, you know, quarter to four to go and do home visits. You'll be shoehorning in legal planning meetings in your lunch breaks. That's the world that I inhabit. So I don't imagine that it's vastly different for you. But again, get into dialogue with us about that because it is something we talk to with your senior leaders about having that space and permission to be present in the training on those days that are allocated to you. Okay. And so yeah, the courses will give you a really strong overview about core systemic principles, techniques, theories and approaches. And most importantly, how they can sit and fit in your day to day work. That's what the course is designed to do. And I'll give you a little example about what the day looks like. And so normally the teaching day will start with what we call the reading group and I'll say a little bit more about that later. So that will be an opportunity for individuals to present ideas from the reading material that's associated with each day of the course. Then there'll be something that looks a bit like a lecture that will be like a teacher led experience. So our tutors will be sharing a PowerPoint presentation, going over the core theories and ideas and interspersing that with discussions and opportunities for you to share and do a bit of practice. And then the afternoon sessions are very practically orientated and they're about you practising ideas. So what we really love is when participants bring examples from their own practice, their own dilemmas, things that they're finding out about in their organisation and we can use that as material. We are really hot on confidentiality and when you start the course, your tutors will talk to you about the importance of confidentiality in the group. And we also have a really clear confidentiality policy in the handbook as well, which we'll be talking a bit more about later. So I really do encourage you to share examples from your work. Obviously within the parameters which you feel safe enough to do so. And always be respectful and mindful of the people we're talking about as they are not present. But that's something that I'm sure you're all familiar with. And again, it'll be something your tutors will be talking to you a great deal about. Okay. Now this is where we can all start to shriek and get a bit nervous and a bit hot, or at least I do. This is when we start talking about what you need to do. Okay. I invite everybody to take a deep breath and remember we are by your side. This is a big ask. I'm not going to gloss it up and pretend it's something that it's not. But we will do everything we can to support you. And like I say, if you're somebody like me that just wants to lock themselves in the bathroom at this point and knock them out until it's all over, bear with us and we will do our best to explain and offer you as much guidance and as much information as we possibly can to sort of like ease you into this process. So for the practice course, we require you to attend 90% of the sessions. And again, the reason for this is due to the accreditation. Okay. Now this means you could be absent for up to two sessions. All right. Sometimes when we say this, people think that that means they only have to attend 13 days. We don't mean that at all. But it means that if you're sick, if you've got a pre existing holiday or whatever, you can miss up to two days. If you are already looking at the dates in your diary, thinking, I can't do that, I'm late, I can't do that. I've got a final hearing or whatever it is, let us know in advance and we will talk with you if there is any alternative. The other thing that we do is we do offer a catch up session at the end of the course. But we like that almost to be a last resort. We don't mean that, you know, sort of like harshly. But do please keep an eye on your attendance and if you can foresee an issue coming up, let us know in advance and we will do our best to support you. I'm going to be frank with you, your attendance is monitored and attendance reports do get fed back to your senior leaders. This is not to beat you up and to say, oh, you should have been there, why weren't you there? It's to assist us in thinking with local authorities about what are some of those barriers and inhibitors that mean that people aren't able to attend training as regularly as we would hope. Okay. But again, I just want to be really transparent with you about that issue. You will be required to do reading and I'm sure that many of you have heard lots of stories about the reading. So let me give you a story from my perspective. So for each of the 15 days of the course, you will be required to read four papers. Okay. Some of these papers, as I've already said, will be available on audio. Some are incredibly long, some are incredibly academic and some are incredibly old. Again, I just want to be really upfront with you. What I've asked all your tutors to do is to situate themselves in your shoes and think, if I only have the time and the ability to read one paper between now and the next session, which paper might be most helpful to me? So we will signpost you to the, let's be honest, the shortest. We will signpost you to the most recent. We will also signpost you if you have a specific interest or issue in your service area that might be more related to a certain paper. Okay. We would love each and every one of you to have the opportunity to read all four of those papers or to listen to all four of those papers. But as I said before, we live in the real world. What I will say is the more you read, the more you learn and, and there's no getting away from that. When people don't read, it always shows in their essays. And quite often a comment I put on people's essays is, I can see that your reading's been quite limited. So as far as possible, however you can prioritise it, it will really, really enhance your experience. But again, I do hold in mind that we live in the real world and there will be limitations, particularly at certain parts of the course. We've also tried to be a lot more inclusive this year and include things like YouTube, podcasts, et cetera. So there might be some opportunities for you to just, I'm acquainted with the ideas in a way that doesn't necessitate you ploughing through a massive academic text. I'll be taking questions in a couple of minutes. So if there are any questions about the reading, I'll come back to it. What I wanted to say is this course is not a test of your ability to sort of like find obscure and difficult to access reading materials. You will all be able to access the entire reading for the course, plus your handbook, which I'll talk about in a minute, plus all the audio versions of the papers via something called SharePoint. In the coming weeks, you will be sent a link by my colleague Tim Ayers. And when Tim comes on the call in a bit, he'll say a bit more about it. So do not think that you've got to go to libraries or on the internet to find any of your material. It will all be available to you and it will be explicitly laid out. And again, your tutors will be prompting you regarding what reading you need to do for the next session. Okay. Another aspect of the course is what we call the reading presentation. And I know this can really strike fear in people's hearts. So let's just start off with the basics. When we say a presentation, what we're talking about is you sharing ideas with the rest of the group about a paper that you've read. You can do it in pairs, you can do it in groups, you can do it sat down at your table. You don't have to stand up in front of everybody if you don't want to. There are a myriad of different ways that you can do that presentation. And the headline is, it only needs to be about 11 to 12 minutes long. All right. So a lot of people find this aspect of the course quite daunting. For those of you that do it, first of all, it's a bit like getting into, I've just got into cold water swimming. So I think it's a bit like cold water swimming. If you can just jump in and like grit your teeth, all for the good, you know what I mean? Sometimes if you're hanging about the edges, it just gets worse and worse. So there will be some brave souls who jump in in the early weeks and we'll be very, very grateful to them. But do, if you have real serious anxieties about this, or you just can't imagine yourself doing it, have a conversation with your tutor. And, and we've come up with all sorts of really creative approaches and a lot of people, and the majority of our participants say this is actually one of the most beneficial and useful aspects of the course. Because it's an opportunity for you to talk together about how these sometimes incredibly abstract and esoteric ideas actually fit in your day to day work. So I'd say, I'm not saying don't be scared of it, because if you are scared, you are scared. But what I'm saying is, I'm pretty sure that at the end of the course, you will also be of the opinion that it was a really valuable and useful aspect of the course. So yeah, but do let us know. You'll be required to write two assignments. We've done, hopefully what will, it won't appear to be a favour to you because you don't know what other students had to do. But our students from like three years ago would be screaming at this point because we've really shortened and lessened the amount of reading and, and sorry, the amount of writing you have to do. Because we knew that things were getting really, really busy in children's social care. And as far as we can, we've really cut back. And as far as we can, we've really cut back on what you need to produce. So the essays are slightly shorter and you no longer have to do things like case studies which you previously had to do. And for the second essay, we've given you a choice of questions. So again, hopefully that will just give you a little bit more flex and a little bit more um, scope. Regardless of your role and, and, and the sort of um, task that you do on a day to day basis. Some much more flexibility in terms of those essays and they're shorter, so I hope that's good news. You'll also be required to complete a portfolio. And that will document twenty-five hours of direct practice with children, families and couples. Really important for those of you on the practitioner course. Those twenty-five hours have to be with more than one family member. And when I say family member, it could be young person and their key worker. It could be child and their foster carer. It could be two siblings, it could be two parents. But it has to be with more than one person and that's really, really important, okay? For the duration of the course, you will need also to work with at least five families. Just so you get that variety of different sort of like topics and themes to write about. So for the nine months or ten months that you're on the course, you'll need to demonstrate that you've worked with at least five families. Not five families all at one time necessarily. But in order to get that diversity and that cross section of ideas in your written work. You will need to demonstrate that you've worked with at least five families. I know most of you are sitting there thinking, I've worked with five families already today, Caroline. But I do like to say that because I know for some of you in your roles. That's not something that I can take for granted that you all have access to or you all do, okay? Um, I'm just going to go very briefly through the managers course, more or less the same requirements. The attendance requirement for the managers course is slightly different just because of that non-accredited status. Um, everything else is the same, except your portfolio will have um, documented twenty-five hours of supervisory practice. And again, if you're a CP chair, that will be twenty-five hours evidence in. The way in which you've used systemic ideas in your consultations with other professionals, your discussions and your work with other professionals. Same if you're an IRO, okay? Um, I think I'm going to pause again there for any questions, anything that people would like to ask. Let me put my question slide up. Oh, where are we? These are all questions that people have asked, so don't feel you have to stick to these ones, but. Um, just have an opportunity um, to have a think if there's anything you'd like to ask or know more about. I'm so sorry, Abba, I'm not saying I dusted off a bit there, but I'm easily distracted. Abba, how can we help you? Am I saying your name correctly?
Yes, you have. Can you hear me okay?
I can indeed. Go, go, go and tell us what your ideas are.
Um, so one question, um. So what about those in-between roles? So for example, where we've got, um, within our Samtesh, we've got advanced practitioners who sit in between um. Managers, so deputies for managers, but also hold cases. Where do we sit when it comes to this, um, um, the two different um, accreditation, is that, is that right? Yeah.
Wow, what an excellent question. Yeah, yeah, a lot of us fall between two stools, whatever they say, don't we? Um, I think you and I can have a conversation offline firstly, I think that's really important. Sometimes we say to people, it depends on your career trajectory. If you're somebody who's looking to move into a management um, role relatively soon. It might be very, very useful for you to do the managerial course. If your heart lies in practice and you're thinking about stopping there um, for a while, it could well be that that is better. It could well be that your organisation has ideas about where you're best placed. So what I'd say, if there is any ambiguity at all regarding, am I on the right course? Give me an email and we'll get into conversation and we'll make sure that we've explored it thoroughly. And we can be confident that we've made a good decision and you're going to be on the most useful course for you. Does that make sense?
It does, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you very much indeed. Karen's just put the twenty-five hours. It, it has to be on work that you're doing um, while you're on the course, Karen. Does that make sense? So the, yeah, so the, the, the work that you're, the work that you're documenting. Because what it needs to document is how you're using systemic ideas, okay? And when you get your handbook, we're going to be talking about the handbook in just a second. When you get your handbook, you'll see. I put mine away. Yeah, I haven't got my camera on, so I can bend down. I didn't even need to tell you that I was bending down. Um, you will see on page, I had it this morning. Bear with, um, like on page seventy-nine of your handbook, you will see examples of your portfolio logs. So it's all in there. We, we don't, we don't like making you guess. We'd much rather be explicit and give you examples where we can, okay? Um, I just want, I'm just going to chance turning my camera on. You will get an electronic copy, you can't see it because of my background, you will get an electronic copy of your handbook. Um, I've printed mine out because I use it every day. Um, but you will get an electronic copy of your handbook. It is absolutely essential that you have that. You might want to print it out, you might want to have it on your desktop. But please make sure you always have access to your handbook when you come on the training courses. Because it absolutely guides you in terms of what you're doing, where things are, what you need to do. And if you haven't got it and if you're not familiar with it. Um, I think it makes the course much, much harder because there is a lot of information. And the sooner that you can cast your eyes over it, I'm not saying read it from cover to cover. Um, but have a look at your course, read through the course requirements, read through the structure of the course. And I think that will make you feel a lot more prepared um, for joining us and, and beginning the process with us. So look out for your handbook. Um, just while we're waiting for any more questions to come. Tim, can I queue you in? Because I think you had some questions that you wanted, or you just wanted to check in with people, didn't you?
Yeah, it was more or less just checking in with some people about some housekeeping. So you've just mentioned the, the centre handbook. Hopefully everyone has now received an electronic copy of that handbook. It went out in an email probably. A couple of weeks ago now, so if you haven't received that um, electronic copy, please drop the centre. A, a note and we'll make sure one goes out to you, but hopefully you've all received your copy of that by now. Also, hopefully you've all received um, the fifteen Outlook invitations for the training days and that they've landed in your calendar. Um, please keep an eye on the venue that actually is in that Outlook invitation. Because if we need to change a venue where we're delivering the training from at short notice. That's where we'll let you know that that venue has changed. So please keep an eye on those Outlook invitations and if the venue changes. Um, around about sort of eight to ten days ago, you should also have received an email that included your day one readings. Um, Caroline just mentioned those, that was an email that had three attachments to it. Um, and hopefully we provided a little bit of guidance in there along the lines that Caroline's just suggested. That directed you to read the Pendry article if you found yourself pushed for time. Um, and then just to note, Caroline also mentioned the Centre SharePoint site. Um, before the end of this week, you should have received an email. With a link that actually enables you to access the Centre SharePoint site. You'll need to use this to access all of the future readings. It's also where we will be sort of saving copies of the presentations that actually accompany the training days. And it is also where you'll find things like important templates to help you complete your course portfolio. Um, and a number of other sort of important documents or helpful documents for the duration of the course. So please do let us know if you haven't received any of those um, communications. And we'll make sure that they come out to you as soon as possible. Um, I think that's probably as much as I need to say at the moment, Caroline.
Brilliant, Tim. Thank you so much. And I've got a question from um, Jessie as well. Hi, Jessie.
Hi, hi everyone. Just wanted to ask, um. You mentioned about five families that we need to be working with or using the approach. Do we also alert them that we're doing this course and obviously are. The information that we govern from our practice. Will be informing, you know, our, our assignments or some, I'm just thinking in it, do you know, like when, when you have um. Students coming to do their placements and sometimes, yeah, they might have to get feedback or do a reflection log or. Is it a bit like that? Do we have to sort of like?
What a lovely question. Thank you. Um, so. Let's think about this because this really speaks to things like ethics and values, doesn't it? Um, whenever you submit any work about a family, it is entirely anonymised. Okay, and, and again, we're really hot on that, so we're talking to you a lot about that. Um, and that includes things like genograms and what have you. And also, of course, if you're a manager, submitting work about your managerial practice, absolutely imperative, it's anonymised. We don't ask families to um, give feedback directly on what they're noticing. So I think it's very much for you about judgment. I can remember always saying, when I was learning these studies, I can always remember saying to families, I'm on this course, I'm on this course. And sometimes I'd say, I'm on this course and I'm trying to do something different or I'm going to ask you a question about such and such. So I think it's, it's up to your judgment. I think it's courteous and I think it's interesting. And sometimes depending how we work with families and where we work, we can say, is there anything you notice I'm doing differently? Um, but there's no requirement because we won't actually be asking families to give an appraisal about. The techniques that you're using or the approaches you're using. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Jessie, thank you very much. That's a really important question. Thank you. Is there anything else that anybody wants to ask? Let me just have a look and see whether I've got anything in the chat, okay? I'm just going to go back and talk a little bit about evaluations, okay? So as I said at the beginning, we're really committed to building our evidence base and also thinking about um, how we evolve. As a teaching organisation and, and, and how we adapt to, you know, current contexts. Um, we ask you to complete two different documents um, throughout your course. The first one is what we call the Beginning, the Middle and the Endpoint questionnaire. Now, these will be sent to you by a member of our team and it is really important that you complete them, okay? So these will ask you about how confident you are about systemic ideas. They will ask you about your learning needs. They will ask you what isn't, isn't helpful to you. Um, and you also need copies of these questionnaires for your portfolio at the end of the course. So when you've completed it, you'll have an option to download it and save it. Really important that you do that. So you can have it, however you store your documents, um, for when you come to submit your portfolio, okay? So they'll be sent to you by members of the team and also at the relevant points in the course. Your tutor will remind you that you need to complete your Beginning, Midpoint and End questionnaire. So that's really important. The other thing that I really encourage you to do is at the end of every session. You will be sent a link or you will have access to a QR code, both. Uh, and that is to um, provide feedback for your experience of the day, okay? I cannot say to you as tutors how important that is for us. Um, we get vibes, obviously, and we aim to respond to what we feel and what we see in the room. But it's so important for us that we know about your experience and we will always build future sessions on what you've told us about ones before. And what you can expect is your tutors will make reference to the feedback. I can't bear it when you give feedback, when people ask you for feedback and then you never know what happens to it. So um, I'm going to be encouraging all of your tutors at the beginning of each session. To speak, obviously, in terms of anonymised themes rather than individual issues. About some of the feedback that has been re- um, received and how they intend to respond to it. Does that make sense? So please do, I know it's another five minutes of your time, but now it's electronic. I'm hoping that it at least gives you the opportunity to do it at a time that's beneficial to you. Um, and we're very, very competitive, so we have a bit of a leaderboard. Not who's getting the best feedback, I must emphasise that, but who's getting the most feedback. So your tutors will be really encouraging you to fill it in because that's what allows us to grow and develop as a teaching organisation. Uh, and also hopefully create sessions and learning experiences that are more meaningful and beneficial to you. Okay, so that's um, a little um, talk about our evaluation. Now, whenever we do these sessions, I'm appreciating, this is a heck of a lot of information to take on board. You will have access to the video. So actually, maybe I'm quite pleased I had to turn my camera off today. Maybe that's a bit of a win. No, I'm only joking. I'd much rather have my camera on. I think it's much nicer. Uh, but you will have access to the video, so you can always play it back. Um, to see if there's anything particularly important that you missed. You've got my email address, you'll have the centre's email address. In due course, you'll have your tutors' email addresses as well. Don't hesitate to get in touch. Just wanted to reiterate that thing about no such thing as a stupid question. Um, we're here to help and we'd love to hear from you if we can be of any help to you at all, okay? So just before we draw the session to an end. I just wanted to check if there's any outstanding questions or comments. That we haven't um, addressed today. Okay. Um, I always say, oh, I'm going to pop into your training, I'm going to pop into your training. Realistically, um, I may not get to see all of you in person. If ever your teachers are unwell or whatever, I always do my best to sort of like cover. Or if ever they've, they've got to go somewhere urgently, I always do my best to cover. So sometimes I do pop up unexpectedly. And if I do get an opportunity to pop in, I will do. But I want to be realistic that that may not be a possibility. But just in case I don't see you, I really do wish you well for your training. Um, and yeah, let us know how it is for you and we will do our very best to support you. And, and it's an enjoyable and beneficial experience for you and indeed your colleagues, families and young people you work for. That's what it's all about at the end of the day. Um, I just turned my camera back on. I wanted to say big thanks to Tim. Tim, thanks for coming on um, the call. I'm sorry, my internet's been so dodgy today. I'll tell you the whole horrible saga at some point later on in the week. And thanks to all of you for attending. I hope it's been useful. Wish you lots and lots of luck. Uh, yeah, thanks for your time and uh, yeah, have a good rest of your day. All right, thanks a lot. Bye, bye.
Thank you, bye.
Thanks, bye.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, bye.